Ladies and gentlemen, this is what we've long been waiting for, to be able to preview the equity profile. So I'm going to hand over the meeting to our meeting managers, Megan McLaughlin and Ryan McElveen.
Great, good morning, everybody. I know we've got an hour for this presentation, and this one, for my colleagues, this is information only, no decisions are having to be made, but this is the board's opportunity to have a sneak preview of the new equity profile dashboard. And when, as meeting manager, I did get to walk through this with Dr. Duran and Ms. Loveglass, and as I left the meeting, I told them how excited I am for all of you to see it, and excited for the division about this next step forward in really bringing valuable information to the board, to the community, and to everyone who's committed to this type of work. So I think it should be a great session. Again, we are at an hour, and so, Dr. Duran, I will turn over to you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. So we're really happy to be back here, and it's interesting, I just noted, it was exactly a year ago today, on Monday, on March 12th, I know today's March 11th, but it was March 12th, in a work session where we presented the equity plan of things that we were going to put in place. One component of that was to develop an equity profile, and we got a lot of very, very good meaningful feedback and suggestions from the board at that particular work session that we hope we've incorporated into all of the equity profile. Also, why are we coming to you today and not sooner, even though we have worked on this much sooner? We are on the heels of the vote on Thursday night, which is the strategic plan enhancements to the metrics, and our equity profile is directly aligned to those metrics, in an effort to show transparency and show the progress that we're working on meeting those metrics. Also, as a reminder, when I presented a year ago, we talked about the need to have some type of an equity profile because it is in one Fairfax policy. And I'm just going to read that part of the policy real quick, and then we'll jump right in. So the policy states Fairfax County Public Schools will incorporate data and publish performance measures that can be analyzed, quantified, and disaggregated to evaluate the extent to which our systems are achieving goals. That's directly out of one Fairfax policy. And so, we're pleased today to bring to you what that looks like, and to share with you, and get some feedback on before we do a public viewing of this coming, hopefully, the end of the week. So, the equity profile is, basically includes five different pages that will be on our public website. It's not live yet because we are giving you a preview, and if it was live, it would be to everyone. We start with our student demographic slide, and I'd like to take us there, Ms. Loveglass. And I want to thank so many members of the staff who helped. This was a collaborative project. We brought together folks from all offices, and really, I can't thank enough Department of Instructional Technology for their work in making this come alive. And so, I want to thank Ms. Loveglass and her team, who many of them are in the audience. So on the student demographic slide, and here's where we took a lot of feedback from the work session a year ago, you will find that we have basically just listed for the public a snapshot and a picture of what our students look like. So we have a summary page, which breaks down all of various subgroups by race, by economically disadvantaged, by English learners, students with disabilities, and gender. And then, that's going down the far-left column. Then, as you go across the chart, you will see that within those subgroups, we have broken down how many of those subgroups are there, that's the total number. How many participate in academic, the advanced academic programs? How many are economically disadvantaged? How many are English learners? And how many are students with disabilities? No, we don't have it to pull up. We asked meeting manager if we wanted to provide that, and we were given direction just for us to display it. So we don't have it live for you to follow along, so you'll have to follow along on the screen.
Can you at least hit one?
There you go. Is that better? Okay. So you'll see that for each of those groups, broken down, and then again, the student demographic page is simply number and percent. So on the far top-right column, you'll see a select view where you can go the actual number or the percent of those student subgroups across the various programs. So we now are in the English learners tab, and then there's the students with disabilities tab. When we met with the board a year ago, we got feedback from the board that you wanted us to make sure we broke down not just students with disabilities, but the types of disabilities. So you'll see here, the various types, if you scroll back up, you'll see the various types of students' abilities, learning disability, speech language, et cetera, broken out across. English learner tab, we also got feedback from the board to please break it down by the level of English learner proficiency. And advanced academic, the level as well. So the summary page gives a high-level view of students with disabilities, and then you can click in and see a little bit more detail, and as well for the English learner and advanced academic programs. So again, this slide is simply student demographics. It's a snapshot that will be done once a year. The equity profile will be produced annually, and this is a one-time snapshot. Then, following our strategic plan enhancements and the metrics that you all just recently voted on, on Thursday, we have linked the equity profile to those goals and metrics. So we'll start with equity profile goal one, which is student success. Within the student success area, we'll go real slow since I know you don't have it in front of you, we have identified third grade, we identified at each level, what is one area that we can show from the research, and from best practices, and from what we know to be true would be important to tell the story for our students? The first one for, before you click that on, the first one is third grade reading SOL. How many students are reading by the end of third grade via the SOL? What's really important here is that we've spent a lot of time helping the public to understand the what and the why behind this. So what is third grade reading in SOL? And then, why is it important to look at from an equity perspective? So, and that's true for every metric you'll see on the equity profile. So while I'm not going to read all of the blue boxes to you, I want you to know that this will allow any person who's looking up the equity profile to have a good sense and a good perspective on what that is. So I will read this one to you to give you a sense and a flavor for this. "FCPS is committed to making sure all students read on grade level by the end of third grade. Studies show that reading proficiency by the end of third grade can be a critical benchmark in projecting a child's educational development and future success." So again, you have the what and the why here, in terms of why this is an important consideration. Then, if you'll click that on, the link, you will see now that that is broken down, and for each of the pages in the equity profile, we have an about page that goes with much more detail in terms of what it is that we're looking at. And this is from the perspective of making sure that the public has an overview of what it is, going down below, some example observations you might have, as well as how do you navigate the dashboard? And we took the time to really get different stakeholder perspectives in terms of, if you know nothing about this, how can we help you to understand what this is telling you? So that about page is true for every single metric. Then you'll have a tab that will take you to looking at that by the division, and over three years of time, you will be able to look at, before you go to division, please, three years of time, you'll be able to see that by ethnicity, race, by our other groups, if you scroll down, and you can also, as required of us to do in the disaggregation piece, to look at it comparing group to group. So you can compare economically disadvantaged to students with disabilities, you can click on and see various subgroups and look at it from different angles. Then, at the top, you will see that you can also then go looking at it school by school. And so, you can look at third grade reading SOL rates by school, and again, with those areas of ethnicity, race, and then at the bottom, other groups, which are, as we stated at the beginning, socioeconomic, students with disabilities, advanced academic, and English language learners. So the framework and the structure you will see over throughout the profile is the same. It looks at each of these groups, and it compares it based on that metric. The next metric in the student success is eighth grade algebra participation. And again, all of these metrics, we did not choose just as a committee, these came directly from the metrics in the strategic plan enhancements. So one thing that's important is you will see that some of the charts look a little different, and the last chart was a line graph chart, which you're used to seeing. This chart, because its participation is circles, because the circle represents the amount of students who are participating. So the larger the circle would mean the more participation. Then, the circles are, and again, on the about page that really outlines this in detail, I know in an hour, we don't have enough time to go through all of that, but it's really, really clear in terms of what each metric is describing and what it's trying to portray. But I do want to spend a little time talking about the circles because I know when we met with meeting managers, they hadn't, this was a feedback that we got, is, "A lot of people probably haven't seen charts that look like circles, so why are we using a circle?" But again, this was intentionally done because it's a participation, and it can show the different size of these various groups, how many participate. And then you also see it's on the chart based upon their percent as well. You can compare that by clicking on, on the far-right column, you can choose different categories to compare, to disaggregate. If you want to look at everybody, this is looking at everybody, if you want to look at just one, you can just click on one and just look at that and see only black students. If you want to do that with another group, you can click that and compare, and look at various versions of seeing the participation. Then, if you go to school, just like on the reading SOL, you'll have all of the schools there, and it will show the exact same chart with the information. So if you want to just pick one school and show, it'll show the exact same thing in terms of the same groups of students. So throughout the equity profile, you will see you have the same groups that we have stated in the student demographic page by all of the metrics that are from the strategic plan enhancements. The next one on the student success is on-time graduation rate. And again, the about page goes into detail, and I know if you look at the about page, you first might say, "Wow, that's a lot, it looks like it's a lot of words." But if, again, if you think about someone who knows nothing about what on-time graduation is, it allows you to really dig deeper into understanding that. And at the bottom of the about page, you have the tips on how to navigate. So if you've not used this before, you can tell you how to hover over, what to do, what to look for. So here you'll see the on-time graduation rate by division with all the same groups that I've been mentioning, and then by school with all the same groups that I've been mentioning. And you can hover over this one, and again, on the about page, it tells you to do that. And as you hover over, you can see the count and the percent as well. So in every metric, you're going to see a count, a number, and a percent. The next one is APIB participation and performance, and we did add performance to this. We know that on Thursday night, there was an amendment passed by Ms. McLaughlin to look differently at performance, and this has not been yet updated to reflect that because that was just Thursday night, but based on that, we will be updating this. So this one will change slightly to include some of that data that was not yet at the time when we created this part of the strategic plan metrics. But here you'll essentially see advanced placement and IB participation by division with those same subgroups, and you can look across the bottom and follow along those. And then by school, you can click on any school and see by those same groups, APIB participation. Again, the performance piece isn't exactly here yet because that was just from Thursday night.
We actually have performance based on passing the course, but not yet on the test scores.
Not on the test, which is what was the amendment from Thursday. So if you're starting to get a flavor of this, I know it might seem a lot at first, you're starting to get a flavor of it looks exactly the same framework in terms of, you have the metric that's in the strategic plan enhancements that you've all agreed upon. You then take that metric by division, you look at it by all the groups that we've talked about, and then you also can look at it by school. So then we go to goal two, caring culture. For this particular one, you will see chronic absenteeism, disorderly conduct, and student assets. And this one, you'll see a lot more wording in the blue box because if you recall, as I stated under student success, the blue box is very important to know what this is and why do we even consider it an equity issue or a concern to look at. So if you think about, most people who've not been involved in education jargon might not know what chronic absenteeism means or what student assets mean. Certainly, those who are working in schools do, but these are terms that are used differently. So we spent a lot of time, again, making sure that we explained this. But if you click on the first one, which is chronic absenteeism, you will see again an about page, which talks about what it is, what it isn't, some example observations, and some tips. And then you'll look at by division, you'll be able to see chronic absenteeism with all of the different groups that we've been using. So it's the same groups by division, then by school, you can click it on and see the same groups by school. So again, the structure and the framework is, you're starting to see a broken record here, right? Every metric by division with those groups, you can compare and contrast them and look at different ones, and then by school, you can see the same thing as well. I know you'll want to play with this and have a lot of time to look at it and see it. We're giving you a preview and an overview, and before we do make this go live, we will be able to, if you'd like, to give you some chance to play with it and ask us questions. I know the first time you look at this, it might be overwhelming, and it is a lot, and we understand that, but we wanted to walk you through kind of the general structure and framework of what this is so that you can then look at it and use it and give us some feedback after that. So disorderly conduct, we have the same setup. We have a three-year look. We have by division, by those various same groups that we're using. Then you go to school, that's moving quickly, and you go to school, and you can see over three years, the same subgroups of students, and you can look at over three years. If you hover over one, you'll be able to see the count, as just like with the graduation one, you'll be able to see the number, and you'll be able to see the percent by the various groups. Then we go to student assets, which is one that's very important in terms of our caring culture strategic enhancement, where if we know that if students have at least three or more of these assets, that they are less likely to be engaged in a negative outcome. And we list what some of those are on the about page, and then again, at the very bottom, some example observations you might see on this page, and then tips for how to navigate. For this one, we don't have all necessarily, some of the data points. In the student success, we had all of the different groups to look at. In the particular one around assets, we don't have all the same levels, so this is what's available. We have race and ethnicity, we have by grade level, and then we have by gender, so that you can compare. This one is a little different because this comes from our student survey, youth survey, so we only have the data from that to pull into here, but all the information that we do have can be disaggregated from that survey as we look at those students with three or more assets. Then if you, the next one will be for goal three, which is our premier workforce, and again, following the same structure of using our strategic planning metrics, we have recruitment, hiring, and retention. And those were the three frameworks in the goal three that you all recently just passed on Thursday. So again, like a broken record, we have the about page, which tells what recruitment is about, what are some examples, and then how much you navigate that. As we shift to this particular goal, we get away from looking at student subgroups, and we begin to look at employee groups. And for this particular one, you will, the employee groups are teachers, school-based administrators, and operational employees. And then those are then broken down by gender and by race. We obviously wouldn't have the other groups on here because those are more specific to students, like ELL and special education, et cetera. So as it looks at employees, it's solely gender and race. For hiring, the same thing, what does this hiring data tell us by those three groups of teachers, school-based administrators, operational employees? And so, those are broken down by gender and by race and ethnicity. We do not yet have on this particular metric, this broken down by school. We did have readily available the information around students on goals one and two, so we included school data. We will be enhancing the equity profile to include data as it relates to by school next year. So we will be coming out, this year, we were beginning with a division-wide equity profile. Next year, hopefully about a year from now, we will have available, each school will have a school equity profile on their website, and that will include breaking down this data even further. But since we did have the school data on the student success measures, we did include it for this. So here you'll go to the third area, which is retention, again, by those three groups of teachers, school-based administrators, and operational employees. And you again can look at it by race and by gender on here. How many are retained, and you can play with that as well, disaggregate it, look at it, compare, and contrast. The last goal is our goal four, which is resource stewardship, and for this particular one, again, connect to the strategic plan and the enhancements there. We have one for goal four currently, which is cost per pupil, and this allows us to, again, you have the about page to give more background, this now allows us to compare ourselves to the WABE districts and look at that over time, as well as looking at, so that's the WABE districts, compare ourself and cost per pupil to other districts in the WABE study. And then we have special groups, which was, this was a request of the board at our work session when we talked about equity plan, to break this down by how much do we spend on students in special education, English learners, needs-based, and then general education. These would be students who are not in any of those also. So this allows us to compare and contrast something different in terms of how we spend on different types of students, and then how we compare to other districts. So before I open it up to comments and questions, I'm sure you're taking it all in, it was a lot, it's a big overview, and you're probably wanting to play with it a little bit more and look at it a little bit more and understand it a little bit more. Let me just recap, like it's a broken record, what I've said about what the equity profile is and what it isn't. What it is, is a reflection of our strategic plan metrics that were just voted on, to show how we are doing, meeting the progress on accomplishing each of those metrics by analyzing and disaggregating each of those metrics around the appropriate groups. So for the student ones, which would be goal one and two, it would be on gender, it would be on race, and it would be on those subcategories of students that we described in terms of advanced academic, special education, and English learner. Around employees, it would be looking at race and gender, around teachers, principals, school-based administrators, which is general principal and assistant principal, and then operational employees. And then from our resources, it would be looking at it how we compared to spending around other districts in the Washington area, as well as how much do we spend compared to special groups within the division. So that is what the equity profile is in a nutshell. There is one other component to this that Ms. Loveglass is going to walk us through, that the equity profile allows you to download a PDF file, print one of these pictures off of here, put it into a PowerPoint. Let's say you're very interested in looking at the retention of teachers by race and looking at that, and you want that picture to include in something. Or let's say you're looking at the on-time graduation rate of, and you're comparing students with disabilities and students who are English learners, and you want that slide to include in something you're going to give as a presentation, or you just want to have that. There is a way that we've built in the measure so that you can download and print that particular picture and use it, or put it into a PowerPoint of a presentation that you might be using. So Ms. Loveglass is going to show you technically how to do that, and it will allow you the opportunity to use it in very different ways.
Just real quick, down here on the bottom, there's a variety of tools that you can do. You can share this information with someone, if you want to share the link with someone. You can also download the data into a variety of different formats depending on the table that you're looking at, and you can look at it from just printing an image, if you wanted to post that into your own PowerPoint, you can download it into a PowerPoint, which I just did, and you can pull that up, and you can take, it shows you all of the tabs, gives you into a PowerPoint that you can then use for yourself if you want to make a presentation to someone. So I just want to let you know, those features are there, and you can also download them into a spreadsheet if you wanted to do further analysis.
Okay. So the next steps is that we are to, our plan is to have this made available on the public website on Friday, March 15th. This is a work in progress, so we can always enhance and add things to this. We will be sharing and going deeper with this with our principals at our next all-county principal meeting in April, so that, we have shared with them in their association meetings, but we're going to share with all principals what is on the equity profile, and then they'll have the opportunity to dig in and play with it some more. And we certainly will then open up and have the opportunity to set up individual meetings if you would like with us, once it is live, to understand it. You can certainly reach out to us, and we'll be working, we can meet with you to kind of walk you through what it is and what it isn't, and how to look at it. I know if I was you, sitting in a chair, just in 25 minutes getting all that information, I might be a little like, "Wow, that's a lot," and just taking it all in. But the good thing is that the about pages on everyone really explains that. The blue chart, the blue square on the beginning helps to understand what it is and why it's important to consider from an equity lens, and then there is the ability to really disaggregate and play with it, and then use the data in a meaningful way for a presentation, for a PowerPoint, or for something you might want to share with the public. As school board members, and certainly for the public, they might want to be very concerned about a specific area that we've committed to in the strategic plan. I will just say one more time that we were very, very intentional. If you, we looked at equity dashboards and equity profiles from around the country, and many of them have created something separate and something on its own. We were very intentional to align this to the strategic plan. We felt if the board had committed, which you did, to certain goals and metrics, that those should be the ones that we're telling, not something else, not confusing and not saying, "Here's another way for us to look at it." We wanted it to be directly aligned to that, and that is what you see here today. We also got a lot of feedback from the board around making sure we included, and again, this was at our last meeting around this, a year ago, so you might not remember that, but we'd certainly watched the tape and looked at all the notes, and there was a lot of feedback from you around making sure we had those different subgroups and that they could be compared to one another, which we did not initially have in there, and now we put that in, as you can see. And if there's any future enhancements to the strategic plan, as was on Thursday night by Ms. McLaughlin, for example, we would then revise this equity profile to match any of those amendments. There is one that piece that the board did pass, a follow-on motion, that is not included in here, and that is information that was asked us to be put in around the SRO, and that is because the data is not yet made available by the county. So I did note on the cover page at the very last sentence that we will include that program assessment data when it is made available by the Fairfax County Police Department. So that is So that is the only piece that we did not include that the Board had asked us to when we last discussed this, and when we had the work session about what you wanted to see in the equity profile. Everything else you've asked us to include, hopefully you saw was there, because we did make sure to include it there. And with that, we will take questions. We have about half hour. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Duran and Ms. Loveglass. Before I begin with board member questions, I was hoping that you might be able to just, again, for the Board and for the audience, describe if there was any stakeholder engagement in how you developed the dashboard. If not, how will you be taking in stakeholder feedback and input on a going-forward basis, including things like data, or topics, or even the format?
So again, so most, the engagement that we've had is in terms of what the data would look like in terms of how we would tell the story. We have not had the level of engagement in terms of what to put on here, because again, we chose to align it to what was in the strategic plan metrics. So moving forward, what we plan to do now, once it becomes live, we will be meeting with various groups to show them what is available on the profile, to how do you use it, how do you, what do you look for, what's there, what's not there. But in terms of what we added and included, we did not have stakeholder engagement in terms of what do you want to see on here, because we took the charge of what we wanted to see was what was the metrics.
Sure.
So it was more about like what you see on this blue chart here, does this make sense? Is this verbiage that you can understand? And then we got some feedback from principal groups and teacher groups around that, but not what to include in here, more so is it understandable in terms of what the language is? Did that answer your question?
Absolutely. Well, it does to some degree. But, I mean, I hear what you're saying about how you developed it, and then, you know, in terms of when you, you end up getting stakeholder feedback, that will certainly be brought, I imagine, to the Board.
Absolutely.
No, the question was, I think it's important for the public to understand who was engaged in, you know, the overall development, even if it's just to get initial feedback. And so you mentioned principal groups, teacher groups, anyone else besides those?
Each of the goals was, had the same goal champion that was used for the strategic plan. They were the goal champions for this, and they had their own working group around what they would provide there. So the same structure for the strategic plan goal. So it was mostly staff, I would say, internal, in terms of making sure that we were aligning this directly to what they were putting on in the strategic plan, the various departments.
So I, just to be clear, and Mr. Smith, I'll have you speak next. What I'm hearing, just to make sure, maybe Mr. Smith, you can provide clarity, it does not sound like outside of FCPS employees, we've done any stakeholder engagement as of yet, but that's something that could occur.
So with regard to the strategic plan, so they use the information and the metrics in the plan, so with the equity profile, they may not have had that engagement, but we did have that engagement with the strategic plan, and we've shared that with the Board. And we can share, again, the different groups that we reached out to and worked with as we develop the metrics and develop the strategic plan.
That's fine. Thank you. It's not that there's a right or wrong answer here. I just think it's, the public, it's important for them to understand who was involved in the development of this, and then we go from there. So I hear what you're all saying, which is strategic plan drove this design, and then we'll enhance it from there.
Correct.
And, okay, so I do have Mr. Moon on deck first, but I have our superintendent signaling there's something he wanted to add, so.
Just 45 seconds. Tremendous work from Francisco, Mary Beth, and the team to pull this data. I do think this is going to change the nature of stakeholder engagement. Our stakeholders have told me since I returned, they want this data. They want to see it for themselves. They want to see the breakdown. We're giving more data out to tell our story. We have a lot to be proud of. We have a lot to work on. This is bringing the strategic plan with an equity lens, and showing it through that equity lens, and using One Fairfax to look at our data and be transparent with the data, because transparency breeds trust. And I think it's going to change the nature of our engagement with lots of our advisory groups, who felt they had to FOIA, or go to a meeting and ask for this piece or that piece. All of it is here. And we don't see this as a one-time, one-hour, you're going to play with it, the community's going to engage in the data, and it's going to hold us, I think, even more accountable to say, one, to get praise for what we're doing well, but the other, to raise concerns or ask for dealing with the grows that we have. And I look forward to making this, I think, as a culture change in how we are sharing and engaging data with the community who go to off-site, private websites to determine the quality of a school. We're going to lead and talk about what the characteristics are of our school.
Well said, Dr. Braybrand. Thank you for that added context. Mr. Moon, you are up first.
Okay, thank you so much. Since I only have three minutes, I'm going to go fast, and then you can answer the questions later on. Thank you for, this is tremendous. I love it. I can hardly wait until I get a chance to actually play with all the data you're going to be providing. Having said that, having said that, since the major purpose of this is not only being transparent to public and all stakeholders, but also give the school system and the community tools to see how we can even improve better than what we have been doing thus far. I know that when you went to school by school, there's a lot of data you'll be providing, school by school, is there a way to see a school data right next to a division data, side by side, so that we could know for a particular school, how that school is performing compared to division-wide average? That is one. You don't have to answer right now. Another one is, if a school, if somebody wants to see, wants to see how a particular school is doing compared to some other schools with comparable demographics, whether there is a way to see side by side of those data? That's first set of questions. Second is just to clarify, when you, when I saw those circle graphs, the size of a circle is the number of students, and the location is basically percentage on the left-hand side, I saw that, okay?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. The reason that we are only providing three-year data is because our strategic plan talks about three-year baseline data.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. But if you wanted to, could we expand further in the future? And that's the question. That's a question you don't have to answer right now.
I can answer now. Oh, yeah, one more? Oh, hold on.
I'm going to do what I want to do. Okay. This one, we haven't ever asked, I think we might have asked for this data, maybe not in conjunction with coming up with equity profile, but we, you know, both members will agree that poverty, poverty and language barrier, I think I used that term, language barrier at the last group of the meeting, play a very important factors, impacts, significant impact on student achievement, whether we have way of knowing from the equity profile, whether you are prepared to provide that through equity profile of the overlap of those, whether, because, you know, there could be substantial, you know, percentage of students with the language barriers might be living in poverty. And also the particular, you know, subgroup might have, you know, disproportionately higher percentage of students in poverty and/or with the English language learners. Whether you see the value in having that, you know, that kind of data, or how difficult or it is to provide that? I'm done with my questions.
So to your first question about comparing school by division or school by school, the way that you would have to do that is to go to that one on the bottom where Ms. Loveglass was showing, to take a picture of that, and to, and another picture, and then compare it that way. That's the only way we currently have it. However, we could try and see if we can enhance it in a way that would make it more easier to do that, just doing chart by chart. We don't currently have it that way, where you could pull a chart by chart. The only way to do that is to download that, that picture, and then do another one and download that, and you can have it on your desktop or whatever, and to look at it that way. That's currently the only way to do it. So it's, it is a little, one more step, but it is possible to do easily that way. We'll see about the system, whether or not, I'll have to defer to DIT about how technically we can add another feature to compare it that way, but at least you can do it by the download version or the picture. The second one, in terms of, we do think it's very, very important to consider the overlap of poverty and/or English language learner and all those pieces. So that is definitely something that you can compare here as you look at students. We did recently begin to look at that and determine how we better, how do we better show that on the equity profile as a way that you can see clearly? Like, for example, if you're a Latino student who is in poverty versus not in poverty, are there comparisons? Are there differences? And so we will be enhancing that a little bit further. Right now, though, you can just look at Hispanic and poverty on the same chart and kind of see, but it doesn't necessarily show the overlap piece, which is the question you're asking. And so that is an enhancement that we will be working to include on here, because we do know that that is an extremely important data consideration to have.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, could I ask for one 15-second follow-up? Because he did not answer my, one of my questions.
Yes.
That has to do with whether it is possible for you to come up with way for us to see a school compared to couple other schools with a similar demographic, rather than, rather than us going through 200 schools and trying to match them.
So we will look at that again. The only way to do that now is if you knew a school, if you knew School A and School B had similar, then you can do that and download it. That's the only way currently to do it. But I think if I understand your question, you're wanting to have the equity profile tell you what are schools that look like that already, so that you wouldn't have to know to compare them. It would show you that on there. So that is not yet in here, but that is something we will work on to enhance the equity profile.
I'm going to include that as my next step.
Absolutely. Very good, important next step, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Well-earned extra time. All right. Right now, what I have is Ms. Karen Kies-Gamara, followed by Karen Corbett-Sanders, followed by Elizabeth Schultz, followed by Sandy Evans. If I do not have that order correctly, or if anybody's missing, you need to signal to Ryan and myself.
I hope it's the right order. Okay. First of all, thank you. I can't wait to get my hands on this. It, you know, I assume we didn't get a copy because there's so many things that you could refer to, but I'm looking for, you said this will be released on Friday. When will it be released to the Board? Because I'd like to have an opportunity to familiarize myself with it before the public starts asking me questions, because I think.
So I can send you links today, that, we have a link for each of the five pages, the overall, and one for each of the four goals. They're not going to be linked to each other, though, so I can send you those sort of draft links, and we can do that today.
Right. I anticipate that there will be quite a bit of response, and I would prefer not to get it at the same time as the public.
Sure.
Just to hone down a little bit more, and as much as I could look at it, and you may have it in there, but with respect to defining absenteeism, I think the public needs to understand that the accreditation standards changed, and that that is part of, and I didn't see any explanation in there as I glanced at it quickly, of how the state is now including this as part of the accreditation process. I also did not see a distinction between, you know, absenteeism, truism, what, truancy, what parents can expect, because oftentimes they then have to be notified with, one, with chronic absenteeism, but how is that distinguished between a child who has chronic absenteeism as opposed to a truancy issue? Because there would be different remedies. And I think if everybody had that explanation, so that not only parents would know, schools would know, and there wouldn't be any discrepancies. I have been hearing about some discrepancies, so I think this information is pretty important. Love the information, looking forward to going through it. I'm assuming that we will have periodic snapshots from, reports from you, your office, Mr., Dr. Duran. And I think that, that's basically my comment. I, I'm looking forward to being able to, are you in the process of setting meetings up with us individually or in groups, so that we can then ask our questions? Because a lot of these I'm looking at, or some of them are hot-button issues. So I want to make sure I understand before I start getting questions.
Yes. So real quick on the chronic absenteeism, if you click on that, to your first question, it is state here where it says, students who are absent for 10% or more of the school year are chronically absent, regardless of whether they are excused or unexcused. That is the new SOA, the new state requirement, and that is how this is structured to show, because whether it's excused or unexcused is a new thing, perhaps for some parents, they might not realize if it's excused, it actually can count towards this. So we did put into the About page what you described in terms of some more detail around what that is.
It's not including where that's coming from, right? Like, parents may not understand.
Oh, that it's a state requirement?
Yes. That it's a state requirement.
Understood.
And the distinction between that and truancy, how it's handled is going to be different. We still accept excuses, medical excuses, and that sort of thing. That shouldn't go toward truancy, so I think.
A more clarity here, a little bit more.
I think so, yes.
And then in terms of the individual meetings, we weren't, we certainly can set up meetings with everyone, just if you'd like. What we had intended to do was to allow you to reach out to us if you wanted to have a meeting with us, we would go deeper with you. But if the sense of the Board is you want to meet, like a meeting with everyone, we certainly can do that. But since you're asking, we'll definitely get you on, and then we'll see the sense of the Board, whether everyone wants to have that, sit down with us, or whether you would just make an appointment with us and see.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Duran. Okay, I have Ms. Corbett-Sanders, followed by Ms. Schultz, Sandy Evans, Tammy Kovacs.
So I think I screwed up on the three-minute again, so you guys will have to use it for the, okay? First, thank you very much. Glad you're doing this. A little disappointed that we weren't given a link to this in advance of this meeting, because then we would have had a more instructive ability to provide more comment, so.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders, I do want to make sure right away, and it won't count against your time, the reason that we couldn't get a link to everybody in advance is because it either goes live or it's not. And the whole point of not going live yet is they're trying to make sure that, does this look like what we want the division to put out to the public? Is there any changes?
So. Well, Ms. McLaughlin, I'm a little confused, because what Mr. Duran just mentioned to us is that he would give his links to each one of the individual areas, and that that's available. So even if we could have had the links to the individual areas, we would have had the ability to have a more informed discussion today. So I, for one, would suggest that Friday of this week is premature to go public with this, because the individual school board members are going to need to have the opportunity to dive deeper in each one of these areas. Secondly, it would be interesting, and I think you clarified this, Ms. McLaughlin, that the stakeholders that were consulted were internal stakeholders. We did not go externally yet with this for external stakeholders such as MSAOC, the PTAs, the Fairfax County Council PTAs. Any of those groups have not seen this yet?
That's correct. We're on the schedule to take it to those groups when it's public, because again, they were involved in getting the input on the strategic plan, and so we use these metrics from the strategic plan. So our thinking was, they had been involved in the process to develop what the metrics would be, and so after the metrics were created with their involvement, this is now showing what that would look like for transparency's sake. So the next step is to go meet with them and show them what the transparency tool can be. But in terms of the information itself, we understood that they were involved in helping to create the metrics through the strategic planning process.
Okay. Well, so I think that when we go live with this, we need to have a intro on the front page that says this is Rev. 1, and we're seeking input on it, because that'll be important. Additionally, there's a lot of data, system-wide and school by school. Question, and this is for Dr. Braybrand, is who's responsible for reviewing that school by school data and holding the schools accountable for the metrics, as well as, and I was glad that my colleague, Vice Chair Moon, raised the issue of being able to compare like demographic schools for all of these, these metrics. And so who is going to be responsible for ensuring that we go back and take a deeper dive and say, why not? And what are we doing? What are the interventions we're doing to address them? And so perhaps as a next step, in addition to having each of us have And so perhaps as a next step, in addition to having each of us have a chance to look at this in more detail in advance of it going live, adding something to the front page, which is that this is preliminary. The third piece is that we should have reports generated and provided to the board on a periodic basis, which provides, rather than us having to go and do the comparison school-by-school, is that we would have a reporting from the superintendent on these equity parameters comparing like schools. And last, you listed as far as the employee section, actually, there are two more, the employee section, operational employees. I'd like to better understand who are our operational employees and if we're breaking it up into individual groups. And on chronic absenteeism, this was raised to me over the weekend as well, and do we need to look at having an online alternative for those students that are chronically absent and excused so that they don't get counted against us, against the accreditation of individual schools? Thank you. And if somebody wants to respond.
Did you want Dr. Brabran to answer first?
Yeah, I'll answer the first one. I mean, the folks responsible for this are our principals, our region assistant superintendents, and ultimately, myself. We already do, a lot of this data we've looked at for years in schools. This is about sharing data with the community in a way that they can understand the challenges that our schools are facing. But ultimately, I'm responsible for making sure that what I would call the grows in this data get addressed. But the great thing that I feel we're doing here is we're aligning the data we're sharing with the community with our strategic plan. And we're in the middle of, Dr. Ivey and the region assistant superintendents, we are tweaking the school improvement plan to align with the strategic plan. So frankly, I really think we're going to really have a lineup of the key data and metrics to help drive our conversations and the work at a level of synergy more than we have before.
Dr. Brabran, the question that I asked was whether or not, how you would be sharing that comparison data with school board members so that we are aware of it? Because it's a heavy burden for us to have to do the comparison ourselves, given our limited staff. And so we need to have a systemic approach to not only providing us with, I mean, we can look at school-by-school data, but taking the deeper dive and doing the analysis between like schools so that we can identify where there needs to be grows as well and what your intervention strategies are to address those grows when that data is shared with us. Because we know that our community members will be sharing those comparisons.
Right, right. You know, Mr. Moon just said that would be a next step, that we can look at how to make that data in a sense, school board-friendly for the comparisons and for our conversations with you, and we'll work on coming up with the format for that. I think this is a great leap forward. When you, I mean, you all go find out and ask yourselves from the community groups, this is new for Fairfax County. And I think they're going to say, "Thank you. This is what we wanted. We want to engage in the data. The data shouldn't be just something that the schools have a shot at. We need to have a shot. We have insight." So I think it's actually going to change the way our conversations get structured and maybe even get us more on the same page about what we're doing well and what we all agree we need to do better. So, but we'll work on getting the format in a way for board review and follow-up.
And the question on operational employees, that is not broken down by operational employees? It is just operational? I mean, if that's something we want to look at moving forward, we can, but HR provided operational as one lump group and then versus teachers and school-based administrators. So it's not broken down. It's just anyone who would be a support employee as coded such in HR system.
So it's everybody outside of schoolteachers and administrators? Or is it everybody out in the field that are school-based employ, educational professionals but not teachers or administrators?
Everybody, well, you see, the in-count is 10,000, so it's quite, 15,000, excuse me. So it would be anyone who's not a teacher or a school-based administrator who provides supports. It wouldn't be leadership team or administrators in terms of, you know, in the central office, but anyone who's providing support services to schools through the operational ends, it would be included here. Everyone at the school or even potentially some central office.
So my question.
But not administrative level.
Okay. So that's my next, that's another follow-up, is at the administrative level. Because if we're talking the talk, we got to walk the walk and make sure that we embrace this throughout.
By leadership, I meant not leadership team, that's what I meant. Because they're not considered a school-based administrator or teacher. And we will make sure also to follow up the comment you made with regards to what Ms. Kies-Gamara already mentioned, to put more of a, we might even put a link in there under the state requirements so that parents can see more level of detail around chronic absenteeism. So we'll have, we can put hyperlinks into any of the equity profile that gives deeper information. Do that.
Excellent. All right. Ms. Schultz, thank you for your patience. And then again, on deck, Ms. Evans, Ms. Darnett Kovacs, and I have Ms. Strauss.
Okay, some specific questions. On the disaggregation across the subgroups, when you have the participation rate where you're showing the circles, while I understand this and this is, I will say, I'm thrilled because this is the type of data I think I've been looking for, for a long time. And thanks to Mary Beth for including in the student profiles this year, adding the category of students with disabilities separately from grades. That was a huge step forward, but this is, you know, another light year forward. But I just wonder, when I look at this participation versus, for example, the participation rate with AP and IB, you use a bar chart there. So what's the reason for the difference in the application of this type of chart for participation when we show AP and IB as a bar chart?
Each of the different stakeholder, stakeholders that worked at each, with each of the different types of data made sort of the recommendations how they thought the data would be best displayed. So I guess I would just say because different groups suggested we show it that way. So that one we probably could do similarly. And the other thing is that one also showed, the AP IB shows information on performance and participation. So it has sort of both of those included.
Well, what I would suggest is that usually when, the way data is displayed in a table is very easy, easily manipulated once you have the data. So giving the viewer the opportunity to see, you know, they can select a bar chart or circle graph, it's just manipulates the data and shows it in both ways. So I would offer that as an opportunity to consider. In this, in this or any of the others, are you able to cross-reference? For example, I saw how you did, you know, you eliminate or keep only. So would, would you be able to show, for example, Hispanic students with disability? Are you able to cross-reference across categories?
Not in these charts. You can, you can put them on or off, but not if they are a member of both. That's the overlap question that Mr. Moon asked. So right now, we aren't showing overlap. We can look at that for next round.
Okay. Well, my big question, and Dr. Presidio knows this is something I've been looking for for a long time, as, is the disaggregation of students with disabilities. The achievement of, and participation of students with disabilities, to lump them all into a single category, I think does a lot of disservices. And that includes when we get down to resource stewardship on the cost per pupil. We need to find a way to not have a single category of students with disabilities. I think our achievement rates will, will be more transparent and I think the cost will be more transparent. So we, you know, if we can, if we can further disaggregate, that's certainly a question that I have. On the cost per pupil on the resource stewardship, if you're able to go to that, do, is there, do we reflect at all economies of scale? I mean, we're, I don't know what, roughly, we are seven times the size of Arlington. I mean, whether, you know, where we are in reference to similarly sized, which there really aren't many, and I mean, Manassas, you know, I'm, Manassas Park, I mean, this is, that's, you know, a couple of our schools. I mean, my region is larger than, you know, many of those entire school districts. So the economies of scale issue has always been a question for me, rather than lumping, you know, where, where do we show that? Participation based on, I have a question, Ms. Loveglass. You said on the IB AP exam or data, the, the participation based on passing the course, it's not pure, we don't show pure participation?
The participation is if you're taking the course. Right now, the performance is if you pass the course.
I'm sorry?
The participation is if you're taking the course, whether you pass or not. The performance right now is the, whether you pass the course.
Okay. And then, I don't have a question, but I, two other things that I'd love to see is not just employment hiring, but offers and the comparison, a little bit, somebody else asked something similar, but I think we have to see comparison achievement by pyramid and by region. I mean, especially if we're going to work with our region assistant superintendents, I think there has to be some accountability in looking at pyramids and, and regions and being able to have comparable data there. Thank you.
For your question on the way, Bill, for Ms. Burden, can you help clarify that in terms of the economies of scale?
Economies of scale are not.
Are you, mic, please? Oh, it doesn't sound like it, okay. I'm sorry. You're good.
They're not factored in, but the formulas that each of the divisions, act same formulas like some schools. Services for the, for the purposes of operating fund and calculated exactly the same. So it is truly a apples-to-apples comparison. And having said that, even though some of the smaller divisions, you know, you see at the lower end, you also see Prince William, which has about 90,000 students, and then you see Montgomery County that is higher than us, that has a similar amount of students as we do, as does Prince George's County. Number one thing, or the number two things that actually impact cost per pupil are the salaries of which are, and your class size. Prince William has the highest class sizes, and even though they are a very large division, they fall to the bottom. So those two aspects are really going to be the two items that impact your cost per pupil more than.
And we will look at how we can further enhance the disaggregation for students with disabilities. The only place we did do that on here was on the student demographic page. So when you go to the first page, it doesn't just say students with disabilities, it breaks down by the various groups, but we do, to your point, need to include that and also the metric data. So that is the next phase that we want to work on and we began to, but for now, it's just on the demographics. But we definitely have noted that to make sure we can enhance that in the next round.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next speaker, I just wanted to make our chair aware and the, and the board members. So we are working on the clock. We, our new approach was three minutes. A lot of times, board members will take the full three minutes to speak, comment, ask the questions, then staff can respond after their three minutes are up. Because we were having trouble with the clock, I was running it off of my phone. Most of the board members were getting four minutes, so out of fairness to the other board members, I would prefer that the clock, if it can be set at three, great. If not, I'm going to be adding an extra minute just for fairness to board members who.
So it was set at three, and what I was doing is stopping it when the staff responded and starting it again.
I understand, Ms. Corbett Sanders, but for at least the first few speakers, the clock was not working at all and I was having to manage it. So that's just trying to make sure we're on the same housekeeping page. So if you're still going to keep sitting it at three, that's fine. I'm just going to give the extra minute to the board members.
So can I suggest that while people go for their first round, you can keep it at four and then we'll go back to the three so that we?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yep. So I.
Go with four, because I don't know how to reset it to four.
Yeah, just keep it to three. Let's not make it complicated. Set the clock at three and then, board members, when you see your time is up, I will have one more minute for you to start wrapping it up, okay? So it's kind of good. You actually get three minutes and then, hey, you're almost done. I have Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Kovacs, followed by Ms. Janie Strauss, and I do have one go-back right now for Ms. Karen Kies-Gamara. Signal to me if you need to be on deck or wish to speak. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you for all the work on this. I can see that a tremendous amount of effort went into this and I am looking forward to going through the, the details of it. I'm going to reiterate a point that Mr. Moon made about needing to tease out multiple factors. I think it's, it's clear that just talking about, for example, Hispanic students, we need to know how many of those students, because we have quite a few now, who are English language learners, quite a few who are, are living in poverty. And I think being able to, to look at those factors will be important in terms of determining how we're, we're going to move forward in, in addressing issues. I also think this will help us in our next conversation about boundaries. We had the conversation about how socioeconomics affect individual schools and school performance, and we had some issues. Has anyone actually studied that? I mean, I think there, we, we do have data, and thank you for that data, coming up, showing that, that socioeconomic balance does help school performance and helps individual student performance. So hopefully, this will help inform us on, on, on that issue as well because I do believe that socioeconomic balance is important in, in all of our schools. I also want to make the point, though, that there's, there's poverty and then there's poverty. I, I wonder, and this isn't, is the next step, but I, it is something for our chief equity officer, I believe, to, to be thinking of. I'm sure you probably already have. Our measurement of poverty has always been free and reduced meals, you know, and, and that's, that's pretty much it, correct? We have an increasing number of students who come to us from other countries, not only living in poverty, not only not having English. Some are homeless students, some have endured trauma. So I do think that we need to start thinking about how to deal with the increasing number of students that we have who aren't only living in poverty, but extreme poverty. I don't know if there are enough students who are students with interrupted formal education to warrant pulling those out, but I would ask that you think about that because those, those are the students that at, at some of our schools, those are the ones that are, that are driving the accreditation issues, the absentee issues. So I guess when my time's done, I realize I have one more minute. I, I would like you, if you have a, an answer to that, I would be interested in, in what your answer is to that. And then, overall, I would say we need to also be thinking very critically about how this informs us in terms of policy. At the end of the day, some of this, I believe, particularly, let's look at chronic absenteeism, some of this is going to be just very individualized. And we, we can't lose sight of that in looking at our, our overall numbers. If a student doesn't have clean clothes and doesn't come to school, that's a very individual issue. If a student doesn't have coat or shoes, that's a very individual issue that isn't, isn't going to be reflected. I don't, and that's not to say there's anything wrong with this data, it's, it's important data. I just don't want to lose sight of that. So my only question really is about how this will, well, this is a big question, how what we have here will, in your view, inform policy in the future? That's the, the big, bigger question. The smaller one is what we do with students in extreme poverty and if there's another way of measuring that.
Thank you for your comments. They're very important ones. I think that today, we're talking about the equity profile as a tool and we're previewing it, but my hope and vision is that this is something that we're using throughout all of our conversations. As you're at the work session tables, as you're at the board table, as you're at the table planning amendments, as we're, as staff looking at things, as communities looking at things, we're pulling this out and using it to really inform what our thinking is about decisions that we're about to make, about proposals we're about to make, in terms of the staff, when we're thinking about our work, as we're monitoring. Couple people asked about monitoring, looking at schools. So to me, the equity profile right now, it could be a little better, but it's a beginning. It's not about just having something up on the website, it's how are we going to use it? And if we don't use it, then it's really for naught. It's just to say that we can check off a box that we have something. So I hope, my vision is that this will allow us and afford us that ease of being able to pull up on your laptop, your phone even, and start to look at some of the data points that are pertinent to discussions that are happening at that moment as it relates to equity issues. I do think that also, what I love, what I'm hearing around the table, is it's starting more. more conversations and more wonderings for us to go deeper and to dive deeper into what are we missing? What more can we bring to the table in terms of data points, like SCIF maybe? SCIF isn't something we can include on the equity profile, because it's hard to capture per se in an annual report, but if you pull it up and say, that's missing, then you charge us to bring that data, and we can get you that data to the conversation that's happening, that's pertinent to be happening at that time. And so where there are missing holes, you, you look and you find, and you direct us to make sure we're bringing that. I will say as an aside, that as we look at any data point on here that's regard to socioeconomically disadvantaged students, I don't believe that tells the full picture, not just because of the extreme poverty piece, which is obviously one that you described, but also because this is based on free and reduced meals. And so these are families who've completed the applications, who've turned that in, and I believe a lot of the families that you're describing don't even fill out an application, and we're not even aware that they're in that data point. So we do need to look at that as one piece of the puzzle, but we cannot say that looking at free and reduced meal data tells us poverty. It tells us something. It begins the conversation. And I want to say again, I believe the equity profile is a help to begin the conversation. We can't be the end of the conversation. It doesn't tell us everything. And so that is one very, very good example that we need to do more of and look differently at when we think about poverty.
Before I go on to Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms., Dr. Duran, can you just, for the audience who may be watching this, the acronym SCIF?
SCIF, Students With Interrupted Formal Education, which are generally our English-language learner students who come to us with not having experience in formal education settings in their other countries, or very limited educational experience in their former countries that they're coming from.
Thank you. I knew that was an important component of Ms. Evans' line of questioning. I wanted to make sure the public understood what we were referencing. So I now have Ms. Kofax, followed by Ms. Strauss, and still a go-back for Ms. Keis-Gamarra.
Thank you. I too want to add my accolades for bringing this forward. This is an excellent start. Thank you for putting it together. I think the format that you outlined is very good. I, I do think it's appropriate to bring it forward at this time, because it was aligned with a strategic plan as far as, and then taking it out into our stakeholder community, because they did have that input in the beginning. So I think that is, that is great. I would, I don't know, I will defer to my colleagues' majority opinion here, but I would like to postpone the, the formal launch for perhaps a week, to allow those board members who would like the opportunity. I looked at my own schedule, I don't even think I can get in this week, so if we have a week and a half to get, you know, the ability to, board members who want a deeper dive to, to show us exactly how to maneuver through the, the new data, I would like to do that so we can put that as a next step and take a vote on it, just to postpone the launch for a week till the following Friday. And I think what I'm hearing from a lot of my colleagues is kind of just the way we are. Thank you so much, but we want to go further now, and I think that's okay. And I think the way I'm hearing something, it's data points versus reporting ability, because Mr. Moon talked about, you know, looking at the two side by side. I, I'm thinking about this in terms of my professional career, when I was the head of marketing and communications, and my first job was in membership. And so what I had to do was pool data points from everyone to see what comparison was so I could market to them, right? So we're not going to be marketing, but we're going to be looking at where do we need help? And Ms. Evans, exactly. And Ms. Evans' comments about, you know, showing the difference between the, the free and reduced lunch measurement as opposed to the, the things that she sees a lot in her schools and I see in mine, the SCIF students, and, and how can we then go? So I think it's, it's a good thing, it's an excellent thing where we are right now, but what we have data points, and I think the next step, at least for this board, would, would want to be, how can you grasp the data points and then use them in report-out formats? Because how can, you know, to compare what school A in, in this region is doing to school A in another region, you know, and, and how that works? And, and I think that's where we will get to those courageous conversations, where we see, well, they kind of look the same, but one may be performing much better. What is happening? So I guess that would be, you know, a next step, you know, we, we get this here, and then what would be the ability and what would be the systemic approach regarding reporting out the data?
And in terms of another week out, we can just make that happen. We don't have to put it on next steps, and we'll just make that happen, March 22nd.
Everybody, okay, can everybody like kind of nod their heads?
That's fine. That was just a date that we thought, I mean, it's not a day set in stone that had to happen. So we will also make sure, we'll also make sure today to email you the links, so that you can begin to look at the links. Again, they're not going to be the same structure where you click, but it's individual links for each one, because, because it's not live, they're not interconnected, but we'll get you those today, so that you can begin to do that. And then, if there's follow-up meetings, I can, I already have one, reaching out to if anyone else wants one, we certainly can.
The only thing, I was just going to say there, if you want more than a week, it could be two weeks. We, we could do it at the end of March as opposed to next Friday. That's an artificial date we selected. If board members want to get in and have a chance to have that dialogue, I want that to happen, more importantly than just a date out. This is coming, the community is going to get it in the next few weeks, but we want board members to be comfortable first. And I get the point that Karen Keis-Gamarra was making, hey, my community's going to email me something five hours after it's released.
Right.
So we can make it more than a week. And I just want to tell you something that we had at leadership team, so you know this. There's some stuff in here I probably don't even know. I don't even know. The community is going to bring it. That's okay. It's okay to share the data, and somebody's going to put eyes on it in a different way and bring something, because I haven't thought about it that way. One, Fairfax is good for the board of supervisors, it's good for the school board, it's also good for the superintendent and leadership team. Take other people, bring their work and life and their lens to data, and if they see something we haven't seen up to now, that's okay. And we'll use that to then drive our response and our strategic plan and our action plan. So I think we've got a lot caught, captured, but I'm sure we're missing, and to me, that'll be what Francisco was saying to, Dr. Duran was saying to you. This is an iterative process, and we'll make it better, and we'll use the engagement. I think the kind of engagement we have with the community is fundamentally going to change as a result of putting the data out in this way. So thank you.
Thank you. Wait, I, I don't think, you, you started, you said, okay, we'll start with being able to take it out, but then you were going to talk a little bit about the reporting out later, or were you going to at this point?
About the reporting out to the different, to the different groups?
Yes, yes.
So yes, so our plan, we have, we have a plan that we are going to be taking it to very, to our various groups, MSAOC, the parent group, our equity stakeholders, as well as our principals, Al County Principal Meeting. So we have a list of groups that we're taking it out to, our official groups that we work through, and we've worked through all of our equity plan on. And so the next step was to share with them and walk them through. At that point, it will be live, so they'll be able to do it on their devices, and we'll actually have a session with them. That was our next step.
Okay, I appreciate that. That wasn't, was, I was talking about...
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood.
Well, the data points versus reporting ability, gathering and then reporting ability. Like, would that be a next? Yes, yes. Yes, like as Karen was saying, the analysis. The, the ability to take it, to take data points and provide analysis, school by school, region by region, within the region, things like that. Like, how do you, how, how long do you think something like that, that, that as a next step will be? And what I, what I'm asking then also, and this is Dr. Brayran, I think, once that happens, we need a systemic approach to, will the regional assistant superintendents have that information for us? You know, who, who will gather that data? Because as, as, as you know, board members have a half of, a very, very capable crew, but we have half of an assistant, and it's not exactly the ability, we don't have that ability to kind of, and, and I know this, like I said, from my, my other job, I know how difficult it is. You have to have almost a team to help you get that data, capture it, and, and, but we need a systemic approach first.
I don't have the answer today, is the honest question, and we'll work on getting that to you as one of the follow-on pieces.
All, all I'll say to that piece is what we have put in our plan is it is an ongoing process, number one. Number two, we are partnering and will be partnering closely with the RAS with regards to school data, how do they use it to analyze? But we also have all of our strategic plan champions that were connected to the goals that are connected to these metrics, and they have action plans that we're developing through the strategic plan process, where they're building in through the reporting mechanisms, analyzing what that data is, not only to report to the board annually, but also internally, there's action plans that are being developed right now through ORC's leadership and helping, and ORC's been a part of the development of the equity profile. So that is how our analysis plan has been put into place, directly connected to the action planning process that we committed to do in the strategic plan, and what that looks like, who will lead that, who are the departments that need to be a part of that, and then the schools, the RAS being a part of that.
Well, and thank you. And as I said, this is a very great beginning, and we're, we're all looking further ahead, but thank you so much for where we are today.
Thank you.
Great. Before I move on to Ms. Strauss, I did want to provide for Dr. Brayran, because this is something that occurred before you arrived with our board. I appreciate the sensitivity in delaying the launch, because you're probably not aware, when this board asked for revisions to be made to the website, because we'd had so many concerns from the community about the website, there was a disconnect with our, with your predecessor. And the board literally got notified within 24 hours that the brand-new website was being launched, here's the link, and you've got less than 24 hours as board members to let us know if there's anything you want to do about it. And we felt completely caught off guard. The website did have a lot of challenges, and we got the blowback from the public saying, what happened to this website? It's even harder to navigate, and the board did not have a chance to partner with the division, and, and I think that was just, I don't think our superintendent meant for that, other than it was the start of the school year, she was excited to get it rolled out, but the bottom line is, it did not put us in our best footing. So you're, you're accommodating and understanding where the board's coming with this today, I think, is helpful to the division as a whole, but I, I wanted you to understand that there's a, a little bit of history here about the board kind of coming in at the last minute.
Thank you. If, if, if it's possible, and, and Francisco, because it might be on the next step, do you know what the first date is for your engagement outreach? Because if we know that date, we can give the board all the way up until the time of that.
Al County Principal, April 3rd.
So we could go to the, we could go to the end of the month if we needed to, for the board to have a chance over the next few weeks to get on Francisco's calendar and do engagement, if, if the board wants. It could be a week, or it could be the rest of the month.
And the only caveat to that, in terms of the links that are going to be sent out today, they expire after seven days. We'll just have to keep resending them to you, just so you know.
Yeah, I'm going to be sending you sort of draft links, and so that's just the way the background works. They, they only, they only stay live for seven days, so. So if you look, the one I send you today, I'll have to send you another one next Monday, and then the following Monday, just to let you know.
So the more we extend it out, you'll just have more links, which is not a problem, I just want you to know that, so you don't think, oh, the link's not working well. You'll have to keep resending it each week.
Very, very helpful contextual information about, you know, with that, but I, I do think, in listening to our colleagues, that would be very much appreciated. My colleagues, when we get to next steps, we can formalize whether people want to just have a, an April 1st release, you know, we'll, we'll figure that one out at next steps. I do want to move on. Right now, I have Ms. Strauss, Mr. McElveen and I have not spoken yet, and Ms. Palchuk, I'll leave it to you, whether you would like to have a turn before I go to the go-bangs.
Okay, just, I have one small question. When you're looking individual schools at the desegregation, what will the N size be? Before you break it out, because some particularly small elementary schools...
For each of the areas, when you hover over that dot, it'll show you what the N is. So it, again, it depends. One of the things I was also going to mention, unless I pull up a particular elementary school, it'll tell you, for example, in this case, females, number of passing and the number of tested, so it's only 47 kids in this school, third grade reading, and Anandale Terrace females. So I mean, it's one of those, it depends on the data, so any, anytime you have a data point and you hover over it, it'll give you the N size. So it's different for every metric and every...
Right, because for some of the desegregation, you're not going to have enough kids.
Yeah, that's one of the things, this is a good example. If you look at this under, this is Bailey's, that's one of the things I was also going to say to Ms. Evans' question. When the N side is, N size is less than 10, we do not show the dot. And so that's one of the things, when you start disaggregating too far down, our schools certainly have access to every single child by name and by need. However, when we public, when we put this data out for the public, we do not show anything that has an N less than 10. So especially if you're disaggregating by race, by ELL, by special ed, and SCIF, there would be, it would be very few dots we'd be able to display. So we have to let it to our schools in terms of they're looking at their individual students, they have that data today, but in terms of publicly providing it, we don't provide anything under N, N under 10.
Because that, yeah, that'll, that'll have meaning in special education.
Because it's identifiable data, so we're not required, we're not allowed to do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, we will move on to Mr. McElveen.
Thank you. Can you take us back to the webpage, the front page that we would see when we... Okay.
Let me go to the homepage, hold on, sorry.
The homepage. Okay, good.
Let me go to the home, this is the home one.
Okay. Just as a note, expanding on what Ms. McLaughlin said about the website, one of the issues I have with the strategic plan is it's very hard to find on the strategic plan page where you actually click to, to view the strategic plan. And I worry, I think the way this is currently laid out is good with the, with the blue boxes at the top. What I worry about is the, when you get down into the, these box sections, and I know that's the way our website is designed, it's very hard to navigate. And just so my colleagues realize that the industry standard these days is every four to five years, we need to get a new website. So the next board and PEC can, can be looking forward to that, along with our, our other colleagues. So that is hopefully something we can correct then. So one overarching question I have is, did we look, how is Fairfax County positioned in, in taking on this kind of profile? Did we look at other counties around the country? Are we the leader in this? Are we taking examples from others?
Yes, we have looked around the country, and yes, we are the leader in this, because many of the places around the country, if you'll scroll up on this, their version of the equity profile is the, the student demographics data page, where they essentially will just provide information, if they have one. It'll be just to provide an overview of the students broken down by the various subgroups. There is very little, and we couldn't find any that I'm aware of, there may be some, but that we're aware of, that really connected it to the strategic plan this way and the metrics in this way around the goals that we're meeting. So generally, they give an overview of what the breakdown is of students by subgroup, by teachers, by paraprofessionals, by principals, by subgroup, but not at this level. VDOE at the, at the state level has been doing more in this way around students, standards of accreditation, and so we did model it, and they actually call theirs a profile, so that's why we thought it was more meaningful, because a dashboard is more just the numbers. This, to me, is more than a dashboard, because it gives a bigger picture, which is the profile aspect, and so we definitely are a leader in this.
That's excellent. So I would advise our superintendent and staff to certainly get, get the word out about that, and certainly present whenever the, whenever the occasion arises.
Well, thank you. It's interesting. We, we did Project Momentum at the national conference, and honestly, now that we had you all, you all voted to affirm the strategic plan with the revised targets and metrics along with this equity profile, I feel like this is going to be the next thing we want to share at the state and local level that we've done. I do want to give credit that, I think it was, it's almost been two years, we went to the governor's conference, I was brand-new in the job, and they, they had selected someone nationally, I think it was from Louisville, Kentucky, who had started work on this notion of a profile. And I remember saying to Francisco, wow, this is something we need to take a deep look at. So I just want to thank him again for coming back, putting this equity lens, and pulling a team across multiple departments that don't include his direct supervision, and getting support and agreement to put forward what I think is the first step, not the final step, but the first step in a different way of how we do business around this kind of data in Fairfax. So I'm very excited, and we'll, we'll be certain, certain to share it out with the appropriate groups and the appropriate forums.
Great, thank you. And my last question, because of time, is going to be about the data on undocumented students, and I know this is obviously something we do not collect at the, at the school, school level. However, when we have that page up front that, that talks about overarching statistics for the system, in this, because this is done on an annual basis, could we not also include just a high-level number, taking it from the Office of Human Rights or something? Just because I always find it very difficult to find that figure, and I... Just because I always find it very difficult to find that figure, and I think if our community is looking for a full picture, it might be useful. That being said, I certainly wouldn't expect us to disaggregate it further, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. I would like to go ahead and take my turn before I move to go-backs. And again, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Palchuk, I know, as the rest of the board noted, it was not made live in order for us to be able to look at it in advance of this, so if you don't have questions, having arrived after the presentation, that's completely understandable as well.
I do have a brief one.
Great, okay. So in normal protocol, then, Ms. Palchuk, I'd like to go ahead and let you go, and then I'll take my turn.
Well, thank you, and I apologize ahead of time if this was already asked, but looking forward to seeing this. My question is, because one Fairfax is unique in that it's a joint schools and county initiative, so I guess my question to you, I know your counterpart, Carla Bruce, and the county and others, is there a collaboration on the goals that we see and that you've noticed coming out of our equity profile? Are they considering a similar profile? And what has been your interaction in how to address so many of the needs that affect our kids outside of the schools?
So we have had discussions with the county government on what our profile is going to look like, and they're very interested in doing a profile as it relates, as you know, they're in the beginning, I don't want to say the beginning, they're in the process of their strategic plan, and so they would like to link theirs to their strategic plan as well once that gets established. However, we have begun, and the committee that worked with me on this identified some areas that are cross data points that we can consider. So we're also looking, for example, early childhood is one, and even the SRO piece is one, even though we're going to include it on ours. So we have begun to have conversations around that, but because we were a little bit further in terms of our strategic plan and the metrics, we were able to produce one much quicker than they are, but they are very interested in it. It is part of one Fairfax policy, that not only the school system will do that, but so will the county.
Right, no, that's very exciting.
And Carla's very excited about doing this, and has been a champion of that on her side.
Okay, if you could just keep us posted on how that's going, and you know, help us as a board be in that conversation.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Great, thank you, Ms. Palchuk. So I'll go ahead and take my turn. I did want to first say that I'm very much in agreement with my colleagues, that the more that we will develop a manner in which we can do that cross-reference analysis among subgroups will be critical, because we do know that even across our racial subgroups, when we then look at poverty, there is a disproportionate representation among some of our racial groups within our poverty, and we know from research that poverty has a very high impact on student achievement. So I think that kind of delineation's can be important. I also want to thank my colleagues for capturing up. I think, Dr. Braebrand, this is, you know, really going to be for your takeaway of this part of the work session today, which is that you and your leadership team may understand the type of data analysis that you're already doing, that this dashboard then is providing and making aware to the public, but even the board isn't necessarily aware internally how this data analysis is being done and informing the work we're doing within the division. So I want to sort of echo the point that was made, and I think maybe in a follow-up Braebrand briefing, as you do with other next steps in a work session, but certainly we'll capture it in a few minutes, to provide for the board, what is that sort of analysis plan of, and you might continue to be revising it based on this new tool, and that's something you and your team may say. We see a way to enhance the work that the regional assistant superintendents are doing, but I think without question, having this dashboard will help our regional superintendents in their offices, ORC, you know, the Office of Research and Strategic Initiatives, that office, I know before I joined the school board, used to be the Office of Accountability, and it was stripped down a lot during the budget cuts, and we as a division, as we're looking at, our intentionality may find that we're going to need to strengthen the staffing there. So again, with increased access to data and having it inform our work, we may end up, you know, needing to even operationally look at how that's going to impact what we do. I also want to say that my colleagues, many brought up the ability to disaggregate among the subgroups, also for things like poverty. Ms. Evans stepped away, but I wanted to compliment her on what I think many of us know and understand, which is even within our free and reduced lunch, our free and reduced meals subgroup, there are degrees of poverty, and so disaggregating that out, those who've come from trauma, those who've come from interrupted education, those will be pieces that I know we'll continue to refine and work on. Students with disabilities, Ms. Schultz was absolutely correct, that it can look very different in that subgroup, and I think being able to make greater granular delineations will be valuable to the system and to the board's work. And then finally, I guess I would just say that, Dr. Duran, I appreciated how you helped describe the fact that this is how we started and developed this equity dashboard, but that certainly there'll be refinement along the way, especially with the engagement with our stakeholder groups. A next step, Madam Clerk, that I would like to have added to the list for the board's consideration, is that Dr. Braebrand report out to the board, who the sort of stakeholder groups you're considering, and that again, might be based on who helped with the strategic plan, but it'd be helpful for the board to kind of see the list of who's on deck for you to meet with, and then if there's any other groups that we want to make sure that get captured up. With that, I do know that we have one go-back with this, and I do want to also say that it's very much appreciated that, you know, Dr. Braebrand, you're recognizing that giving the board some additional time to look at this is just a very welcomed mindset. Ms. Kiesgmar, you are on deck.
Okay, I didn't know if they wanted to comment. I just want to clarify a couple of things with respect to employees, you referred to operational employees, it would be great if we had a definition of what that means in the actual document, so that, again, we're not guessing as to what that means. With respect to how we use this data, I think a number of us have mentioned that that's of concern. I would love to see a follow-up with the board, as well as Dr. Braebrand and staff, as to what this means. I think that the, you know, there's going to be, you know, quite a bit of scurrying once this information is released, and it begs the question, what is FCPS's plan next to do with that? And included in that is going to be, I think, we're going to need some priorities, because a number of issues may arise, Dr. Braebrand, and I know part of the reason we wanted to work on the strategic plan was because we had, what, 50 goals, and we needed to make it something more workable. I think we're in the same position here, because this is something that covers the broad landscape, we're not going to be able to address all the issues that arise as a result of it, and so I think that part of that follow-up discussion is identifying what those priorities will be, that's being transparent, that's also letting the public know how we plan to proceed, and certainly giving them the opportunity to have some input. So I was going to suggest as a next step, that that would be, you know, first of all, identifying what those next steps will be, how we plan to use it, but also identifying what those priorities would be. Fully support delaying the launch, there was a mention of undocumented students, as I recall, it's been a long time since I took constitutional law, but I know that we are not allowed to use that information in any way in terms of providing services, and so I think, you know, we need to have some discussion along with legal to make sure that we handle that appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I could say, I think there is a chance there's going to be things that come up that we weren't, as I was saying earlier, weren't ready for, prepared for, except I'm optimistic that because we align this with our strategic plan, we're still headed in the general direction. You know, I heard someone else say earlier, it might have been you, a lot of these are hot-button issues. That's what's in the strategic plan, a lot of hot-button issues. Look at your agenda today, this board is getting into some deep, important work, and that's what a school board should do, and that's what a superintendent is supposed to be hired to do. So I think we'll miss a few things, but I think a lot of overlap. I'm hopeful, be prepared for some things that haven't come to our attention that could come up, but I'm hopeful that many things that come up will simply be validated, maybe for some, I think some of the community are going to say, we've been telling this for a long time, and here's the data right here to say it. And you know what? I made a decision with the leadership team and listening to you, that that is more important, that builds a bridge to trust to then get the work done. If you're not even going to admit there's a problem, you're never going to get something done with a group. So I think, I think we have it, but I will work to refine it and come up with a better process for things that don't come up now, that are going to as a result of this information being released, and I'll work on that and share the board.
If I could just respond to that, I think the importance of that is to also signal to the community, yes, we are aware of what this says, we want to deal with these issues with the level of fidelity and trust that you would expect, but we also want to be forthcoming as to what our plans are, and the community should be informed about what that means.
Dr. Duran, we'll go ahead, if there's anything you want to comment, and then Madam Clerk, could we go ahead and pull up the next steps, please?
Just real quick in closing, I want to thank everyone for this opportunity, and we're really excited about the beginnings of this. We will move the launch date to April 1, and in reflection, we just realized the March 15 day was not because it was a week from today, initially we're supposed to be here in the work session in February, so we had given more time, I was trying to look at my calendar, like, why did I do that date? But now I saw that was why. So we will move that to April 1, you will get the links today, and if they expire, right now they do expire seven days, if the team might be able to work on that, if they don't, when they expire, you will get a new one each time. So just know that's why you're getting a new one if they can't be extended. But I appreciate the conversation today, I'm very excited about this, and what I'm more looking forward is not just the launch of this, but how we use this data in our day-to-day conversations, decisions, and actions. I want and I hope that all of you, once you understand what the tool is, and all, meaning all of us in this room, leadership team and public, will use this regularly, refer back to it, and help us make better form decisions to help all students be the very best they can be.
Excellent, okay. Colleagues, as you can see, we're 45 minutes behind, so we'll go through this pretty quickly. I do think that it's just one of those learning lessons, Dr. Braebrand, when we realized with a 30-minute presentation, we should have just built in more time for questions. So we'll work on this list for now. I would ask my colleagues to read what's captured here by the staff, to see if it accurately captures what your request was, and then we will go ahead and quickly move through them, so I just want to give you a minute just to read through.
So Ms. McLaughlin, item three is partially what I had said, there was a second half of that, which was not only providing analysis to the board, but intervention and remediation strategies if there are significant differences in success of students at one school versus another with the same profile.
So intervention and remediation strategies needed at the individual school level?
Correct, or in the individual pyramid even.
So if you read that now, does that capture both yours and Ms. Kofax's request?
Is there a reason you didn't include region?
Oh, I'd be happy to have region in there.
Right, because I think that, to some extent, that takes in, number one, ill-yongs, and the second half of eight, which should really be split off, because that's different than the first part of eight of mine, so that there's an ability to report, like in the Goal Two report on student achievement, they should be using this data. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's taking it beyond the so what.
Okay. All right, let's just go ahead and start moving, starting with number one, Mr. Moon, does that capture what you were asking? Colleagues, all in support of that? Okay. Number two, provide means to pull school to division and school to comparable school comparison graphs side by side.
Is there a reason not to combine, so now my number nine, it's like a version of what you were saying, but it adds to it, I think those should be combined, because it's the same thing. If you want to compare school to the division, or school to school, or compare how the pyramid is, schools within a pyramid are doing, I mean, that's the fundamental thought, it's the same thought, it's just, I think we should combine them.
Yep, okay, great, all support for number two. Excellent. We, number three, we already wordsmithed, develop systemic approach to using the data points for reporting out and providing analysis to the board, and intervention and remediation strategies needed at individual school, region, and pyramid level, all in support? Okay? I will be reading these, because I realize that the public's watching, they're not going to be reading a screen. So number four, on chronic absenteeism dashboard, clarify excused absences, chronic absenteeism, and truancy with a link to state information on these areas. Ms. Kiesgmar, excellent, all in support? Great. Number five...
I just, can I just ask a question on that one?
Yes.
Is there any reason, I'm just wondering, I didn't hear from staff, are we able to do that in a table, is, show the difference between excused absence, chronic absence, and truancy?
No, 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 it wasn't the table, it was the...
All absences count towards your chronic absenteeism, which is why we have combined them, because it doesn't matter for state accreditation what type of absence it is. What we were going to link to is the information that describes that process.
Okay, then if we could just change one word from clarify to define, because I didn't understand what clarify meant.
Yes, I would agree.
Define, I understand.
I wanted to make sure the public understood what happened.
Right. I think defining it with the link is helpful, okay.
Well, and I would say, define by state, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a link to state information, I want the public to know, we're not defining this, the state's defining it, so...
And after that, in the definition that's here...
Excellent. Okay, so there was support for number four? Okay. Number five, add note on the front page that the dashboard is preliminary, will, is preliminary, oh, we cannot keep that written as is, is preliminary and will be revised as needed, okay?
Yeah, that's basically, we're seeking input when it goes live on April 1, so that people know that they can provide additional input and insights.
Okay. All in favor? All right, number six, clarify term operational employees and staff included.
Sorry, can I ask a quick question about the last one? Will it be clear on there how people can provide input? Or, that's my only request, or, you know, opportunities will be shared for providing input, just...
We'll make sure there's a clear way for them to provide.
Thank you. That's, you're exactly correct, Ms. Palchuk, thank you. Yep, number six.
May I ask a question on that?
Yep.
Is it okay, Ms. Corbin Sanders, if we say define, because what I was asking for the actual, what does that include?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Number six, support for that? Okay. Number seven, disaggregate data on students with disabilities, Ms. Schultz?
As long as the staff knows that I mean that throughout the various tables, because in one place it's disaggregated, but in other places it's not, so just, you know, a more com...if you know what I'm saying...
It's aggregated on the student demographics page, but not on any of the student achievement data, and we'll have to look at that, because you might end up with some low ends, so we'll have to look and see what the options are for that, and see what possibilities are in for this public display.
I mean, I'm happy if you want to add to the extent allowable.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Can I ask a question? On Thursday night, Mr. Moon and Ms. Kiesgahmara added, introduced an amendment that did disaggregate students with disabilities in a couple of the academic areas, and so I presume those will be added into this, correct?
Yeah, that data was already added into this because it only impacted one thing on the profile, and that is fixed.
Number eight, for me, was employment offers versus hiring versus offers. So not just have hiring, but also have offer data, because we can offer a job and somebody cannot take it.
Correct, Ms. Schultz.
That's a crucial part of the consideration.
Right, we'll have to check with Human Resources to see if they're capturing that, so.
And if not, then, Dr. Brabran, it's something that the divisions should consider because I've drawn the analogy that's similar to college admissions. University can have, you know, a number of applicants, they can offer admissions to a percentage of those applicants, but who yields and actually accepts those offers can be different. And if you don't have the middle number in there of how many you offered, it would look like the university wasn't necessarily offering the number of admissions that perhaps might mirror the demographics of the applicant pool, but it's what you yield at the end. So you really need the A, the B, and the C statistical numbers. You can't just have A and C and draw inferences of, this is how many applied, this is how many took the jobs, and so it must be A equals C.
I don't know if we voted on that yet, but since mine two are together, there was one other one that I had, which was an option of how the data is displayed, an option in the display tables in a drop-down menu, so whether it's, you know, a circle graph or a bar graph.
Right, so your next step request would be that future abilities to select the graph options?
I mean, if everybody agrees. I mean, I don't know what a Tableau worksheet is, and if somebody's going to be, who's familiar with Excel, can use Tableau, if that's proprietary or...
Tableau's a commercial product.
Okay, so it's OTS, okay.
But I do, Ms. Schultz, you did ask that question, it just wasn't captured in next step, so I'm glad it's being written here and for the board's consideration. Ms. Loveclaff, is that something that, from an IT standpoint, if the board says we would like to, you know, look at developing that option so people can choose the different graph format, graphing format of the data that possibly...
All of these we're going to look at and see what's doable in the short term versus what we'll do in our next round, so, yeah.
Excellent, okay. So we are at, it was number seven, that Ms. Schultz had asked, disaggregate data on students with disabilities throughout tables to extent allowable. All in support? Okay. And then number eight, include data about hiring versus employment offers. Those in support? Ms. Corbett Sanders, you have a clarifying question about that, number eight?
I was under the impression that we had asked for this in the past, that this data should be started to be collected. And so I don't think it's a question of whether we're collecting it, it's that this was supposed to have been collected over the past couple of years, so...
Yeah, I would say, Dr. Duran, as long as you all take it as a next step then, and then...
We'll check. Dr. Nixon's not here today, so we'll check.
Right. And certainly with...
And collecting it versus having it in a format that's usable to give to us is very different, so we'll have to check.
Did we not have something along those lines in the strategic plan? Am I, okay. Right. So I think this is helpful for Dr. Duran and Ms. Loveclaff, too. Again, as we're doing that cross-reference between the strategic plan and the metrics we want versus what's in the equity dashboard, that being there, they can just go back and do the relook. So there was the support for number nine, yes?
Rather than say, "Display data," say, "Display the type of display." You're talking about the type of display.
Type of...
Type of display.
Type of table.
It's the type of table.
The data is already displayed, it's the type of, whether it's in a circle...
The type of table, in which the data is played, yeah. It's the type of table.
That's fine. Okay, support for number nine with the options that you could have a circle graph, a bar graph, okay? Number 10, postpone the formal launch. We can delete that, that's already been determined that it'll be in April 1st, so just make this look less complicated. Number 10, provide board with a list of external stakeholder groups to be consulted. I don't necessarily think I want to use the word consulted, but to review the new dashboard. I think that's technically what you'd be doing.
Yes.
Okay? Support for that, it's just getting the list so the board's aware. And number 11, identify priorities for plans using the data.
I think they understand what I'm...
Okay, all right. I think, Ms., number 11, you know, identifying parties for plans for using the data.
I'm good with that, I can work with. If I'm not good, Karen will help clarify if what my response is not...
Karen, do you think that should, Karen and Karen, yeah. Yeah, let's look at number three and see if that should be combined, or if you...
I actually was going to do it, we just took some off.
Okay. Let's bring it up to three. It's all part of it.
May I add, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, that I wanted it to be a next step is provide, you know, just a brief update of...
The county.
School-county collaboration, and as there are changes or further action to update us as well. Thank you.
Excellent, absolutely, Ms. Palchek. And so, colleagues, you do understand that was something Ms. Palchek had asked during her time, it's just doing that, checking in with the board and doing, so. Provide brief update on the school-county collaboration. I don't know.
Updates as they come along, so just...
Collaboration on equity dashboards, we need to know what the collaboration is about.
Well, it's on...
Equity profile.
No, it's not. Equity profile, dashboards.
Is it?
Profile.
Are we differentiating?
Equity profile and corresponding dashboards, because they're going to be creating a dashboard, too. Okay? Okay, and then, Madam Clerk, Mr. McAlveen's was not captured, so he's going to share that with us now.
I would just say, look into providing undocumented student data. Look into means getting legal advice on that as well, probably. Thank you.
And I will say, Dr. Brabran, that I did hear from a staff member that because of the Office of Refugee Resettlement, I do believe they have some of that data about who gets resettled in Fairfax County, and so that there is, the question was whether or not FCPS has that individualized data and whether then students can be coded that way, and it was raised that that possibility...
So we'll review what data we have, what data we haven't, what laws govern this data, whether we collect any data at all, and what kind of data we collect, if anything. So we'll be glad to do, it says, "Look into providing and reviewing," we can review, I don't know what we have.
Okay.
And to be clear, I don't expect the school system to collect data, I just want us to incorporate anything that we receive from external bodies.
Right, so, yes, as Mr. McAlveen said, it's what we receive from external agencies that would then inform our numbers and what we know. And now I have, Ms. Evans?
I just think we have to be very careful with this, and, you know, putting this as a next step without any clarification, I think, could upset a lot of people. So I wonder, are you looking for just an overall number, Mr. McAlveen?
My concern is that I have a hard time finding the statistic on that at the county level, and I think I would like for us to have access to that.
So if all you're looking for is an overall estimate of how many undocumented students we have, I think we should say that rather than, because this says, "Look into providing undocumented student data."
Yes, yeah, I agree with that.
That sounds like we're doing something else. So if what you're looking for is, see if we can get an estimate, see if we can get an estimate of how many, approximately how many undocumented students we have, if that's all you're looking for, I think we should say that.
And then I just have a clarifying, you're looking to get it to you, or do you want it public, though, on the page? Because that's, there's pros and cons to that, but I just want to be clear because you need access to it.
My main concern is that the board does not have a way of getting that information on a...
Because I could see, you know, and again, I'm not legal, but I could see potentially how that could be provided to you through legal means in terms of closed session or things of that nature, or wherever, Brabran briefing or whatnot, but I'm just, I would be a little bit concerned about making it part of the public equity profile.
Sure, that's fine.
Getting you the information is one thing, but making it public is another.
Let me see if I can, just from a process standpoint, because we are running out of time already, I think, Ms. Evans, you're correct, that's a data point that we could ask in a Brabran briefing. These were next steps about the dashboard, and since we're not collecting data at an individual level and coding students into a subgroup of undocumented students, then it doesn't really relate to the equity dashboard itself, because the dashboard is about looking at data across a number of metrics, so...
And doing something about it.
Yeah, so I think that...
Are you suggesting not doing this?
Mr. McAlveen, you're correct, we should be knowledgeable on that data point. I would just say, Dr. Brabran, please provide that number when you can, and I would remove number 12.
That's fine, we can do that.
Okay. Does, Mr. Moon, you signaled, do you need anything else?
That was going to be my point.
Okay, excellent, I read your mind then. Okay, colleagues, it is now officially 1:02. We have 28 minutes versus 30 for your lunch break. We will reconvene at 1:30.
And for our colleagues to know, due to some staff being out, we are going to move the discussion of the calendar, which is currently scheduled for 4:30. We will be moving that to the next work session in April, so that also relieves some pressure on our schedule today.
Actually, that, Ms. Corbett Sanders, puts us back on exact timing, so we are thrilled.
I knew that.
Here we go, everybody.